Did you call the roll, please?
Yes, good afternoon. Mr. Bailey? He is online. Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Herbert? Dr. Bustles?
Here.
Mr. Brennan?
Present.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickman?
Here.
Thank you.
Reverend McDowell, would you like to say the implication or would you like to pass it to the substitute Catholic over there?
I'm not a substitute Catholic, I'm a substitute preacher.
Let me refer to Mr. Brown as a substitute preacher. Substitute preacher, why don't you pray for us today?
I'd love to. Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, please bless this gathering of city leaders. Please bless our city as we discuss important topics and items that will bring our city forward and to make Columbia the best city in the state of South Carolina. Please bless the people and those who participated in the forum last night, those who have strong feelings, and those who believe in our community, in our people, in all people in Columbia, to bring us all together to solve issues and to do it in Christ's name. We thank you, for all of us, and we ask you to bless us in your son's name. Amen.
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 Mr. Mayor, are you ready for the discussion items?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, we will begin today's budget workshop with the fiscal year 2024-2025 special revenue applications. Ms. Missy Coffin, the Budget Program Management and Grants Director, will take counsel through hospitality tax advisory committee recommendations, state accommodations tax advisory committee recommendations, the tourism development fee, liquor rebate fund, and our external request. And we will let our guests know at the appropriate time, and I'll read their information into the record at that time as well. An additional external partner, but really an internal request of the city, has to do with marketing and communications. And we also have the Crawford Agency representatives on virtually to go over with counsel their scope of work as proposed for the upcoming fiscal year. So with that, I know Missy's going to go over the funds, probably again, to a certain degree, answer any questions that counsel may have, and go through the recommendations as outlined. Missy?
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Thank you, City Council. It's good to be with you again today for what may be, or hopefully it's our final budget workshop before second reading of the budget tonight. And today, we were talking specifically about special revenues. And we have a lot of moving parts, so we're going to try to take through, hopefully, a logical method of making these allocations and discussions. We're going to start today with the reviewing the committee recommendations from the hospitality tax, state accommodations tax, as well as the tourism development fee. These are items that have been presented to you previously. City Council has received that material in the past, so today is just a conversation about those allocations more specifically. And then we also have additional discussions, as Ms. Wilson mentioned, regarding some special projects and initiatives of interest to City Council. So just an overview, special revenues includes our hospitality tax fund, our state accommodations tax, tourism development fee, and liquor rebate, liquor permit rebate funds. Of course, hospitality tax is the largest of those funds. We won't be speaking about all of the budget in detail since we've had those discussions. This is specifically about allocations from items that are identified in the budget. And so we have two great programs, as we've mentioned, hospitality tax and state accommodations, both of which have committee recommendations that have been received by City Council. First is the hospitality tax, and there's two different groupings. The first is the committee allocations, and next is the line item agencies, which is allocated directly by City Council. The committee allocations, total applications received was 688, 68 applications, and the committee was available funding was $3,594,954,000. And so the committee recommended funding for the full amount of the allocation. There are members of the committee here today, again, and would acknowledge them and thank them again for their service and for being here. And then the next grouping would be, of course, the hospitality tax line item agencies. Those are the more direct recipients from the city. They're considered legacy groups. If you recall, the city has some type of fiduciary or ownership responsibility with these groups, so therefore they receive direct allocations from the city. Their request was totaled 3.4 million, and available for funding is 2,838,000. So is the preference for counsel to continue through this entire presentation, or do you want to talk about the committee allocations here or move on to state accommodations? And I will add that the action for voting would actually be during tonight's council meeting, but today is, of course, for discussions to take for action this evening.
Does anybody have any questions on the committee at this point? Or I prefer to wait until you've gone through all of it. That's okay.
Okay. Next, we have the state accommodations tax program. The state accommodations, as we refer to that one as being much more prescriptive by state law in terms of how those funds are allocated. State law also directs that those allocations must be recommended from a committee. And so that committee was met and held interviews as well. There was a total of six applications received for state accommodations tax. The total requested was 4 million. The available funding was 2,337,000. The committee has recommended allocation to two groups that has historically been funded by the city for these funding. Of course, the funding, again, is dedicated, 30% must be towards advertising and promotion of tourism and 65% tourism-related activities. That's according to state law. I would point out, not for action today, but for future, that there is an additional allocation of $1 million in the current year budget that has not been allocated. If City Council was to allocate those funds to the committee recommendations as well, we would do that after the budget is passed in July. Next, we have the tourism development fee. This is our local accommodations tax. It was passed some time ago, really specifically for the Midlands Convention Center, and so the largest allocation for that is a request from the Columbia Metropolitan Convention Center of 2,750,000. We've also made some allocation in the current year and requested continuation next year. This is a portion of the funding for that initiative, and that's the city's branding and marketing initiative. The tourism development fee budget is requested 221,000 of that total request is reflected here. For that part of the presentation, we will have representatives from Crawford and Crawford Strategy LLC, who is presenting, I believe remotely, that will be presenting for this portion of the conversation.
Question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Missy, what time in the, what point in the fiscal year do we do a true-up for all of these funds to figure out if they're trending higher than expected?
Well, we typically are reviewing those, especially right now during the budget process. We have adjusted, the proposed budget was adjusted from the original numbers that we've given you, in terms of chewing up, like, in terms of like there being available fund balance or something, is that, or is it much as the projections?
Well, projections more so than...
So projections, we've trued up for the budget that was adopted, was approved, the first reading last council meeting, so we trued up this budget in May.
Okay, thank you.
And as Crawford is preparing to present, Missy, I don't, you may have said this, but just so counsel is really clear for what they'll then see tonight that mirrors the presentation they're about to give, and I know Mr. Brennan had particularly asked about the scope of work, and that's what they're going to go through, but that would be reflected as the actual contract scope of work for your consideration this evening. And those funding sources that Missy mentioned, of course, there's a different way to fund this marketing communications strategy now. Of course, we went through, and they'll speak to this as well, originally, an initial smaller contract for the original work to get us to the point to figure out the logo and the brand. This is more of the implementation of those things now and the ongoing work. It incorporates some of the things that was recently discussed in the Economic and Infrastructure Committee meeting as well. But, Missy, did you mention that the 221 is just one of the
Yes.
items, of course. There's additional funding from the, all the eligible sources.
Correct.
And that'll be reflected on tonight's
Right.
council agenda.
And as we continue through today's conversation, you'll see the other allocation sources, but it is hospitality tax, tourism development fee, as well as the state accommodations 5% tax, which is our general purpose. And we also have some funding that's in economic development and public relations budget. So it's funded from multiple sources. And with that, I believe Crawford is
Earl, can you hear us?
teed up and ready to go.
Perfect. Can you guys hear us okay?
Perfect. Just making sure you can all hear us, Missy?
Yes, thank you.
Perfect. Well, great, just good to see you guys, Mayor, Council, thank you. I have Taylor Wilson and Megan Murphy on my team as well, who'll jump in, who's been working closely with Ms. Utley and the entire her team over the past year. I'll try to go through this pretty swiftly, but please interrupt with any questions or comments as we go. So Megan, if you want to click for, just a quick recap of what we've accomplished as a team over the last, you know, six to 12 months, working closely with the entire Columbia team on the social audits, the brand audits, obviously rolling out the new guidelines, the economic fix book, and the logo, as well as socially creative support. And then kind of as a one-off to that scope, we are working closely with the Columbia PD and Columbia Water to integrate their creative and strategic work into the larger conversations. So really quick, these are just some highlights of the work over the last six months. As the city manager mentioned, a lot of this was kind of strategic, get off the ground work and move forward, and now as we look toward the next fiscal year, it's really the rolling and the implementation of this across the board. So what we're looking to do over the next 12 months is a continuation of the current scope. And as we look forward, that 221, as we mentioned here, we'll cover PR support that we work on, social media in partnership with the internal city team, ongoing creative support through the PR, media, marketing, other approved elements. So this is applying the new brand, the new look and feel to existing collateral, helping update the team with new collateral. And then we lumped in the Columbia Police Department and Economic Development Department support that was previously separate into this larger SOW with strategy, social, and PR support for those two departments. So everything you see here is a continued implementation of the current work and kind of bringing it to life, so to speak. And then what you'll see in the additional support over the next couple of slides are kind of what we call one-off projects that we've worked with Ms. Wilson and the team to figure out what is the most impactful way that we could continue to bring life to the different elements. The first one to be is a website audit and consolidation recommendation. So obviously, there's multiple stakeholders and URLs, but we'd be working to implement a plan and strategies for how these sites work more seamlessly together, how are they more searchable, how are they able to be more user-friendly particularly? So that would kind of be one separate project that you'll see allocated at the end, but an entire audit and recommendation on what that looks like from a city's online presence. Next, we have the annual report to the community. So this would be roughly 75, the 80-page report that highlights the department's role and the strategic objectives. So we'd be working with partnership with the city stakeholders to write the tone, the feel, the brand, the look that have been laid out with the guidelines. And obviously, this would be the report that goes out to the community of the year in review, and then helping partner with what that does as it comes to print and the different digital elements that come from the book. Then now we're going to kind of get into some more engaging and what I call fun materials, where how do we bring the city's brand to life? And how do we showcase really what Columbia offers and the different highlights that people not know? So we'd be working to identify what we call the Columbia Highlights Video Series, and what makes Columbia unique, what makes it distinctive? And it's figuring out and identifying those partners, those folks that live in the city, telling their story, and putting those out within 30- and 60-second versions that can live on social, they can live on the website, they can live in promotional materials. But it's really trying to make Columbia the authenticity that we've done, the brand side, we've done the marketing side. This is more grassroots and organic, and how do we start telling Columbia's story from a citizen perspective to highlight not only what it offers as a place to live, but a place to visit and a place to come ultimately spend your money? And then I think the last time we talked in the committee about the Innovation Tour Support Shaw Circle. So this would be a smaller project to kind of what I call pave the path for Shaw Circle's success. So this is working on a PR plan, working with different local and national media outlets to showcase what is happening with the Innovation Tour, to show that Columbia is not only a place to come and start with innovation, but has the people and talent to help you come and showcase what the city has to offer. So this came about with Shaw Circle over the last couple of weeks and what they're going to hopefully do over the next two, three months. Last one, this is not scoped yet because we're figuring out what it looks like, but the whole idea is how do we create buzz about Columbia around different big cities and different competitor cities as well? But building off the soda machine idea, how do we take what we call experiential marketing and with different events, different activations that happen throughout the southeast nationally, how do we showcase Columbia in a way where have a soda machine, it tells facts about Columbia? We're still figuring out the nuances of how this work, but this would be one idea that bring to life Columbia in a way that gets PR buzz, that gets people saying, wait, what is that? Who is that? What city is that? But playing off the soda, soda city idea with how we can activate in different markets throughout the region. So what this looks like as a whole, everything you see on the left is what I call business as usual support. That's the day-to-day work of PR and social and creative and helping update collateral that really make the brand stand out. And everything on the right is a little bit of what those broken-out one-off projects are that we just highlighted through. So I know I went through that pretty swiftly, happy to answer questions as needed or go in any detail if there's any further thoughts on any projects particularly.
Questions? Will?
Mr. Mayor, the report to the community is very important, and it has been in the past, but moving forward, Ms. Wilson and the Crawford team, how are we going to work in kind of our strategic plan goals?
Right.
To make, to really show the residents and the public that we are making strides in those specific areas?
Exactly. And I'm glad you brought that up. We probably should have had some language in that regard, but that would be the purpose of Crawford's, working with the departments to create a template. When Bryant mentioned the tone of how it will be written, I think right now what we've been doing is probably a little bit across the board, departments would just submit things, and then we would compile the information versus it being written with an eye towards the strategic outcomes that council has set for us. And so they will be a big part of setting that tone, setting the template, doing the writing. I mean, obviously, our department heads are wonderful and doing a lot of things, but I think this, again, is part of that continuity, consistency, and making sure that we are conveying to the public that those strategic outcomes that you've set, the goals that have been met, are now being reflected in the annual report in a way that people understand it.
Fantastic.
In addition to that...
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's vital, Ms. Wilson, I think...
Go ahead, Bryant.
I was going to say, I think to that point, there's going to be an introduction in here that says, here's every, here's the progress that's been outlined, here's the progress that's been made, and then each section that's written is writing to that overall objective versus feeling almost like one-off reports. There'll be a continuity to it, almost like a progress check to the objectives, kind of like Ms. Wilson was saying.
And then I'll let, Missy, I didn't mean to cut you off there, Bryant, but the other part references some fiscal reporting. For a long time, you know, we've been very successful with our CFO and finance staff in getting the government financial reporting excellence awards for many years. There's also a budget book and some fiscal reporting that we could probably get awarded for as well, and I believe Missy's intention is to mirror the look, the feel of the report to the community now with that budget book as well, and whatever assistance Crawford can give us in that regard.
Yes, ma'am. The idea is to really start with the budget book and the way the budget book is laid out, and then that the finance department produces an annual financial report, and of course, the report to the community, so those coming on the sort of the, at the end of the budget. And so there'd be a flow, concept of there'd be a flow from one to the other. And then the new budget tool that we're also using, ClearGov, has those, will be laying out, the strategic plan objectives as well.
Thank you, that's great. It's good to see everybody working together. Couple more quick questions before I know Councilwoman Herbert has many questions, I'm sure. With the Shaw Innovation Ambassador Tour coming up, you know, the mayor and council and kind of the core innovation entrepreneurs have really wanted to create this umbrella that says, you know, Columbia is an innovation center, and we want to be a center of excellence. How can we grow what Shaw and Crawford are going to work on to be a more permanent message based around this new Columbia logo and branding exercise?
Can we tie it in?
Yeah, because we've talked about bringing all of the entrepreneur groups that are doing amazing things in different districts together to be kind of the clearinghouse that says we are a city of innovation.
Kind of much like what we're doing with the river, you know,
Right.
bringing in all the communities and promoting it the same way, without giving us a chance to capture all the incubators that are working, the organizations that we've invested in.
And that's food for thought for Crawford as they prepare this stuff. How do we keep growing that?
I think that's a great point. The Innovation Tour Support specifically is trying to give that group a leg up, but Megan, if you go to the call slide summary, what you guys mentioned for that ongoing support, obviously, part of the BAU work on the left is public relations, and we're working with the city's team, but I think exactly what you're saying should be a pointed emphasis for PR efforts, building off Shaw Circle. So we consistently, weekly, meet with the teams to say, hey, well, what's going on from a PR perspective? What should we be proactive about? I think what you're mentioning from an innovation and hub should be a pointed emphasis for PR. So that would, that support would kind of fall on that left side that you see of the ongoing support, where we identify PR opportunities.
And my last question, the website audit figure, that is basically just making sure all of our different departments flow correctly through the website and everything, latest and greatest information is accurate and everything?
It is, and it's also giving an assessment on should they live together, should they live separate? What's the best way for an ecosystem that has these separate entities to seem as one?
And not just beyond that, but also, you know, user experience, making sure that your constituents, when they do them on the website, you know, are having an easy and experience, are able to find what they're looking for, so that's part of what that SEO and functionality piece of that is as well.
Great, thank you.
And I will say that our internal team members had already identified the need for the website audit and consolidation as well. So it was really like a no-brainer when Crawford also had identified the same thing, a lot about user experience. I know our, now our special events team, when they've been out and they recently visited with some other cities, they came back with some interesting ideas, and it kind of spurred the conversation again. So, you know, we got some new eyes looking at things around here, going out and collaborating with their peers in other cities, and I think that's been helpful too, as we're bringing back these ideas. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, in my next, just a couple of questions with respect to the website audit. Is this an ongoing process, or is this a, we come in and check two times a year?
This one would be a, hey, it's a large, one-time upfront recommendation, and then we pass the recommendations off, and the partners from the websites would go to implement. So this would not be an ongoing project. It's a kind of say, here's where we are, and, you know, the way we set it up, we could report out and, hey, here's phase recommendations on how you want to accomplish, but this would not be ongoing.
Okay. And then with respect to social media, I think I saw that in the budget, if we could go back to the budget page. I have been waiting to see what the recommendations are going to be. Earlier, I think we combined all of the associate, we combined all of the pages, and I have been concerned, particularly with some of the departments, and I think my example was the OBO folks who are listening, you know, there for small business information, may not be interested in everything else, and certain niche markets being able to market to their areas. Is that going to be a part of this stage of the contract to get that recommendation? Because it's, is that going to be this part of the, this stage of the recommendation?
Megan, I'll let you speak to how we partner with social today, because it's, this is probably one where we provide a certain number of posts a month that get slotted into the content calendar, and then that's partnering with city employees that develop some social as well. So Megan, I'll let you speak for a little bit of that. There's ways that we can nuance content to specific folks, but that would require targeting and a little bit of a paid budget to target those folks specifically, once the consolidation now has been to one audience. But Megan, do you want to speak a little bit of how that content calendar comes about?
Yeah, so we meet with the city social team at least once a month to plan all the content for the following month, and we make sure we have at least one economic development or office of business opportunities post for each month. And then based on events, or if there's like the economic development awareness week, we might do more for that month, but that's how we go about the social so far.
And the messaging on these posts are more general audience. I think your question about how do you get very, very nuanced to specific groups, most of the content we're partnering with is, I would call that broader awareness messaging versus nuance for community, but maybe correct me if I'm misspeaking.
Yeah, that's correct.
So does that mean that's an internal decision that we could make with respect to the departments that had their own websites and had their own following, but now they don't have it? And it does make it difficult to get, to get the emphasis to the niche group of people when it's mixed in with everyone else? Well, I think that the decision was made, I guess to be direct about the answer to the question, the decision was made during the period of time of the original work that Crawford did, because it was based off the data and the recommendations. So we went, and maybe Bryant, I don't know if y'all are totally understanding the question, when we originally engaged with you all, that was a big question about usage. And I think what I remember very distinctly coming back is that we were too saturated with what was going out and not in a method that engaged folks. So I think the work since then has been determined based off that data. I mean, and y'all may be able to speak to that better than I can, which then helped make determinations about if we were going to keep one-off or two-offs of social media platforms for certain departments or not. And I think the base
Gotcha.
the data that was given, the determination was made that we would not do that unless it was, you know, obviously CPD, fire, and Columbia Water for the purposes of public safety and some regulatory things that have to go out based off the sheer influence that those departments have to the public. If I'm misspeaking, it may be that
No, that's right. I see what you're saying. The consolidation, you know, we're still speaking to those niche groups, but what you're doing is you're bringing them into a broader conversation. So rather than having 20 social handles, you have one, but you can still work in the content calendar and speak to those groups. So I know Taylor has the audit pulled up, and we're happy to share that back across, but what you're trying to do is get more information to a wider group of folks, and that's not saying the niche audiences don't get the information they once had, they're just coming to one handle, so they're going to see their information mixed in with other information throughout the city events and things like that.
And I think that is precisely the issue that I'm concerned about, because what I saw earlier in the data was that we had higher engagement with people who wanted a particular set of information. So let's say you only had 500 followers, but 50 people liked or responded on the small page, whereas the city might have had 20,000.
page, whereas the city might've had 20,000 and posted the same thing and get one. Engagement is the goal of the social media. And so if that has been changed, what I would like to ask is that we evaluate to see if it's been any better. I haven't gotten any indication. It may be better for us, but I guess I'm thinking about end user, small business, to see whether we can make it something that, that will be helpful to the businesses.
Yeah, and that's something we can definitely look at and, and help evaluate. You know, we also look at, you know, categories of posts and what gets the most engagement compared to others. I don't think, Taylor corrected her wrong from a historical perspective. We don't have any much data that goes back into the nuance, but we can definitely look at categorize from an engagement standpoint. You know, what, what we tell folks too, while engagement is often a key metric, getting the awareness in front of eyeballs is also a big factor and it's tough to measure that, but definitely hear your point.
And I guess what I would ask to, to the point that you were saying, you may not have the historical data, then maybe we need to have the, give it a chance so that we can create the data to see how the engagement compares, compares, is how it compares if we don't have the historical data.
Well, I think also, so we're not all over the place, if OBO is the target market or niche market that we're talking about, then let's just say that. Because I don't know that the engagement across the board with any other platforms that we had with departments, I mean, I'm just not hearing that there's an issue. So if there is an issue, then we need to know there's an issue and address the issues versus just sort of throwing things out there and see what's going to stick. I mean, I want to use the time and obviously the retainer that we're paying for wisely. If OBO is still the concern about them having their own platform, then we just need to address that.
Yeah, I still hear it from, not from people, I mean, not from city staff, but from
Outside businesses.
Outside. And it, it just makes it easier to get the information. And there may be other departments, but I am not here to speak for anybody else.
Yeah, I'm not hearing that unless I outcall the assistant city managers, that's their responsibility with their departments. If there are other council members who have other concerns in particular, just please let us know and we'll, we'll address it.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, go ahead.
Dr. Bussles, then Ms. Brown. I just wanted to bring up and just kind of highlight the discussion that we had at the Economic Development Committee for all of council. And that was really talking about how, as we continue this work with Crawford, really using our role as a convenor to get key players at the table to start thinking about some universal messaging that we can all embrace when we talk about our city and really having Crawford be that outside facilitator that can help cultivate some of those relationships and conversations. So that, you know, while our distinctive brands might be a little bit different, the language that we're using to position Columbia for future opportunities and, and the pride that's built from that is a little bit more cohesive than it actually is. And that was something I think that, you know, Councilman Brown and Councilman Brennan and I were really, I think, keen on making sure that this contract included.
I think
That's a fun one. And we actually worked, talked about that this morning, working on a, you know, a one to two pager that will be distributed to the partners about the key talking points and how we talk and things like that. So that's absolutely on the docket. And that's, hopefully if we can run it through, it will be out in the next three or four weeks max.
On top of that, I think it's important for everyone to realize that as we develop this and go through this, it really is, there's, there's the messaging to our citizens about Columbia. And it's, it's really, it's, it's a messaging about what's happening and what makes up your city and the people and all, and some of this is, is getting out of the humbleness that exists in Columbia and you can't quietly tell your story. You have to tell your story. So, so I look at this as really two super important things, which is the messaging to our own citizens as well as the marketing to the rest of the country of who, who Columbia is. And that's, that's the story is who Columbia is. And people, people know it, but they don't want, they don't know how to tell it. So that's why we're going to bring, we're bringing Crawford in to help us tell our story. And that's why what Dr. Bussles is saying is so important, you can't have 27 stories. So, so the story can have, you know, it can, it can have legs to it, but, but it's got to be one story. And this is, this is, I can't stress enough how important I think this is to the next five to 10 years for Columbia to, to get this story. And it's one of those things, when I, when I see it, you're going to know it's right. And it's important that, that this is a super coordinated effort for all of us. So no pressure, but, but I'm counting on this to be amazing.
And it has to be a collaborative story, a story that is just not taken in happenstance, but a concretized program that speaks vehemently to who Columbia is and what we have, what we have to offer. That story has to be so permanent within our council that it, it oozes out into the city. We can't tell a story because we, I'm going to say it like I feel it, we don't have a story. And what we're trying to do is to develop one that is contagious, comprehensive, and that we are able to share with others that story that we have collaboratively together. Not the council, not the council story.
It's people's.
But you're exactly right. It has to be. It cannot be an individualized story. It has to be a story that we sing off the same sheet of paper and that we understand that if we have differences, we recognize that and we talk through them. But it has to be something that leaves this place and metastasizes itself into the community. Storytelling, storytelling. How strong is your story? How vehement is your story? Is your story strong enough to tell young men and young women? I hate, I'm not going to hate to say it, but the wages of sin is death, but the gift of God is eternal life. Isn't that the story? Somebody ought to say amen. Isn't that the story? And if that is not the story, then we run, we run the risk of having a city that is under ruination. As my grandmama used to say a long time ago, if we can't share the story in a collaborative way, it's the ruination of a city. I think you know that, Bishop. And I think that there's power in that. Thank you.
Rep, you, you finish your story?
Let's say it off right now.
I did have one other question. I don't think I see it in the budget, so it may not be anything that's going to happen anytime soon. But the soda machine and tying it into the Soda City, is that something that, and sometimes I'm a little late, is that something that we have decided we want to sow into?
Brian, I'll speak.
It's not in the budget right now. It is a very much work in progress. It's an idea to spark conversation. Thinking behind that was how do we capitalize on gatherings that are happening in other cities that have the audience that we want to showcase Columbia to and encourage the web? So this is not imminent, it's there for conversation. There's some homework to do on our side, but the idea is festivals, events, business conventions, entrepreneurial workshops, if these show up in those places and they have facts about Columbia intertwined, it creates the PR story that it takes off. So that's the thinking, but you're correct, it's not currently in the budget. Is this, is it going to take a little homework to get off the ground?
And Brian, sorry.
Yeah, just to follow up, because I also wanted to see how did that blend in with the branding and the
That was my question.
Together, I'm not going to say what the new phrase is. We are together? We're better together?
Together, we are Columbia.
Together, we are Columbia. So I was just wondering how, how that all fit in.
Yeah, I mean, this would all, if it comes to fruition, the soda machines would be branded, you know, the drink, the drinks that come out of them would have facts about the city and things like that. So from a look and feel perspective, this is just a proof of concept picture. All the city, all the, the city branding would be on the machines, on the drinks and things like that from an awareness standpoint.
Cool, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh.
This is Tyler Bailey. Y'all hear me?
Yeah, just real quick, Tyler, and then I'll pass it over to you. Just one more thing, Brian, that I would love for you all to keep in mind as you're thinking about the Generate Buzz. There's a lot of opportunities that are probably lower hanging fruit to help saturate the new brand, whether it's us partnering with Soda City and council being out there with shirts or, you know, swag and things like that, partnering with Experience Columbia. You know, there's, there's some of those partnerships we could leverage as you're thinking about this larger concept of the soda machines.
No, completely agree. I think there's two audiences, right? There's our internal audience in the city and then there's the regional and national audience. This was Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Bailey.
Well, on that note, just, could somebody give me some history on Soda City? Where did that come from? I mean, I've always wondered that and now that we're going to be looking at having soda machines with facts on it, I think it'd just be good for, if anybody else in the public doesn't really understand as well what the Soda City, how it became the tagline for us.
It's because we short form Columbia to cola and cola is soda and therefore Soda City. And I believe it was the farmer's market that first kind of blew that name up and now you have all these businesses using it.
Got it, thank you.
Brian, did you all, I know in the original research, did you want to add to that at all? I think Dr. Bussles did a great job of just saying kind of what it is most succinctly.
That, that's exactly the, the high level background on it. As it touched on, you see merchandise and how et cetera are thinking with where it goes out. How do you get folks to remember Columbia? You know, Greenville, G Vegas, no, no real reason why it's G Vegas, but then when you're traveling, you hear people talk about it and Greenville comes up. So it's how can you get the name out there that people remember Columbia by more than just the name Columbia? So our thinking was if you do this unique way with Soda City and embrace that larger than just the city itself, that is ways people remember Columbia and it's more top of mind. That's kind of the, the background thinking on it.
Thank you. Unless there are other questions, I know we have so much to get to, the only other reference I would make for council for your council meeting agenda tonight is not, we talked about this contract, but then of course there's the separate smaller contract for the Shaw Circle regarding the innovation tours that was explained to you. And that group was explained more thoroughly in the Economic Development Infrastructure Committee, so it was referred out. And that's also due to the timing of them getting started with the tours. But that's also on your council agenda with the backup material. Any other questions?
Any other questions? Council?
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So if we are wanting to move on, then we can continue on with other discussions regarding some special requests and initiatives. And we do have two presentations today. First is Three Rivers Music Festival, Mr. Roy Brasley. And then we also have Silicon South with Bishop Davis. I believe Roy will be speaking first. I don't know if you have a presentation, materials or just for discussion.
As Mr. Brasley comes forward, I would just make the point too, for the public and others that are here, that these presentations as external requests are more because it's a citywide special consideration of a citywide effort, it's really a city-sponsored event, a special event that the city would be partnering on. And then of course, the Silicon South presentation is more of a special type project that is coming to council as an external request. So that's why they are presenting. Mr. Brasley?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
First, person amazing, I want to thank the council for allowing me to take a few minutes to discuss the Three Rivers Music Festival. This is an honor for me to do because Three Rivers was a major part of my life when I was still trying to figure life out. Music is truly powerful to me and it heals and encourages and uplifts. So being able to attend the festival of that magnitude at that young age was truly amazing to me. I want to remind all of us about the best parts of Three Rivers. It was an event that garnered Columbia attention on an international level. We had festival goers flying in from over 19 different countries to be a part of the magic. When we speak of the impact it would have on local businesses, especially the small businesses, Three Rivers would cause restaurants to literally run out of food, bars that run out of alcohol and hotels were booked from here to Florence. It would be an injustice if we did not reintroduce this festival as it was years ago, but now with several upgrades, improvements to ensure a successful event. I have watched the city's new rebranding process closely and heard at Chairman Brown's recent Economic Development Committee meeting, that it is important to incorporate the themes and tone of the new brand into everything we do when possible. It builds upon the shared identity and tells Columbia's story when the stakeholders and partners utilize these themes like the Three Rivers. What better way to amplify the city's new brand and logo than with the Three Rivers Music Festival? The festival was an iconic event from past years that celebrated great music, fellowship, family and friendships amongst all ages with a very diverse crowd. We should brand it so that it would appeal to all demographics and and around the city of Columbia. So in this season, now is the time to brand Columbia as a fun place to be. We have the chance to create an atmosphere for international and national artists to come and perform and the turnout be record-breaking and historic. I know we can do that with Three Rivers. We can start out not as big, maybe two or one days instead of three and maybe have two stages instead of four or five. We just have to focus on the best parts of Three Rivers, pull those moments and make them great again. Together we are Columbia and the city deserves and needs the Three Rivers Music Festival again. Are there any questions?
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
If I can find Mr. Reverend McDowell, please.
I mean, as long as I've been in Columbia, Three Rivers has really been an integral part of my musical existence. Three Rivers was, was fine.
Yes, sir.
It was great. What happened?
I think that there was some decisions made. I think one year the, the weather played a part. And then I think that also, far be it for me to say, but I believe that the flag had a lot at one point. I think there was some political stuff the very last year with some sponsors were pulling out and, and others were like, they were angry that other sponsors, if I can speak freely, I believe that the state newspaper pulled out because the Free Times wanted to be a part in either one, they wouldn't do it together. So that caused them to lose money. And I know it's been said to me several times that it was, this was like, they never made money, but it was never about money to me. I just think that it's something that we need to do to rejuvenate and re-excite the city, the community, because we need positions and we need programs like this. We do, we need events like this.
Well, what happened actually was that you had Three Rivers and then you had smaller events taking place, which drew from the same crowds sometimes that Three Rivers were a part, was a part of. And the thing that, that's sort of interesting, I would not want it, would not want to say, let's go with Three Rivers again if we can't sustain it
Yes.
in a way that's, it's going to be from one year to the next.
Correct, yes, sir.
And not just one year and then five years down the road, we do another one. It's just not sustainable, I think. It gives to each person an opportunity to hear what Three Rivers is all about and not, and not stagnate that, the following year. You understand what I'm saying?
Yes, sir. That's why I think that if we, if we present it the right way this time, and again, don't jump out there so heavily like a three-day event, maybe make it a one day or two day, preferably a one day the first time, kind of get our feet wet in the area again, I think that it would be better than it was because now we're in, we're just in a different generation now. We, it's different things going on, technology, everything is going. I think things have definitely changed since 2002, 2006, when it stopped. We're, we're in 2024, so things are just different. And I, and I know that we have And I know that we have the support of so many that would love to see the festival come back, because I talk about it all the time. I'm talking about it since last November and I'm so honored to even be at this point to be discussing it with you. But it's definitely something that the city needs and a lot of people in the city of Columbia and surrounding areas miss the festival.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you for being here.
Yes, ma'am.
You know, as we're reviewing all of the different age tax requests, one of the themes that I consistently see is that this community is very rich in terms of its music and theater and arts culture. And something that I would like to see is that, to Rev's point, we really, if we're going to make an investment, we want to make sure that this is sustainable over time and really becomes a pillar in the community and it never becomes that it has to go away for several years. And I think one thing I'd like to see be explored is for you all to more formally partner with some of these events groups or music related nonprofits or organizations that have been putting on large scale festivals in the time that this was gone to help make sure that you all have an infrastructure that's set up for success and would then allow you to tap into maybe demographics of people that we aren't thinking about right now, but that maybe they have, you know, direct access to. So, you know, some of the organizations that come to mind, like I know the Post and Courier Foundation has been doing the Food and Wine Festival, there could be something there. You have the Latin Festival that happens, you have, you know, the Pride Festival. There's a, I think that there's a lot of talent that you all can kind of tap into to help make sure that this festival is set up for success too, because they've been doing it now for several years. And there may be things that they can kind of help and may have resources that may not take, you know, duplicating effort and they could help kind of tap in and make this successful as well.
I think that's a great idea. I actually was going to partner with Seven Sunday as one of my groups in DDG that, because we've been doing it for a while. I just had a successful festival last Friday downtown on Manning Elmwood, which was attended by over 5,000 people. It was a Nova Fest. And we were shocked ourselves, but it was a beautiful time. We had, it was record numbers for us because when we did it in '21, we had like 2,800 people. So, you know, just the marketing that we did and just people in the community that know us and know what kind of shows that we put on, they came out to support and we had a beautiful time. So I think that partner, the partnerships would be an awesome idea because we definitely would need as much financial help as we could. So I've already kind of reached out to some sponsors, some bigger sponsors to assist. So I'm definitely in agreement with what you're saying because a lot of the foundations could definitely pull together and make this one big, big festival. Because truly Three Rivers, it just really sat in a lane by itself. It was just different from everything that we ever had within the city of Columbia. So, yeah.
Mr. Mayor? Also, thank you for being here. Kind of tying into that, what I would recommend is that you really, and I'm happy to help, to be honest with you, because I really do agree with you. I think that this would be great to bring back. I loved your line to make Columbia a fun, a fun place.
Yes, a fun place to be.
And I think that's really relevant. And it helps with some of the initiatives of bringing, keeping younger people, keeping talent.
Interesting.
You know, so I think it all ties really well. What I would recommend is that you tie into the business in the private community, but also really look at, you know, what's an overall budget? So is it going to be a million dollars? Is it gonna, you know, what is it? And, you know, you can, you can, you can either jump into that budget or you can back into that budget, it doesn't matter, you know? So you can say, you know, we only want to, we only want to spend this much money and then you can develop the festival based on that or vice versa. Or say we want the festival to be this and it's going to cost this. So I think, I think this is, it feels, it feels a little early to me, you know? It's a lot of money, but it also feels really, really powerful and I think it's, could be very impactful for our community. So I want to let you know I'm supportive of the concept and if I can do anything to help pull this together, I'm happy to.
I appreciate it. We definitely would like to see this definitely next year. The date that I was seeing was June 21st because we want to get past all of the graduations and whatever else. I know that Mother's Day, and then I thought about Father's Day, but I know that during the, around the 21st of June of next year would be a kind of free weekend in the city because I've been back and forth with Twala Roberts at Experience Columbia and she was telling me there's several festivals that are scheduled already from January to May as like six.
That's right.
So we're trying to, I don't want to compete with those crowds or if possible, I can contact some of them and say, hey, why don't you come jump on with us and we make this together and you bring your budget with mine and we make it more, you know? So we're definitely on tap with that, definitely.
I'm glad you're having an ongoing conversation.
Yes, sir.
Because it's going to take more than just talk. It's going to take some finances.
Yes.
And to have that conversation means that that's down the road and we're looking at down the road. If we have those kinds of conversations, there needs to be some specificity to it in terms of how much it's going to cost us.
Okay.
And I think it's important, every now and then you need to ask, how much is it going to cost us?
Yes.
And if we can't answer that, then we don't need the program.
I totally agree.
And I think the conversation that you're having, you know, a conversation that I think is very needful in the life of this Three Rivers concert series.
Yeah, I think that it's just a beautiful thing to me, just even thinking about it and the possibility of it coming back. It would be a blessing just to the state or to the, at a whole, because you're thinking about people from 19 different countries, like festivals like, don't do that, like Woodstock and places like that had people coming in from all over the world, but we literally had people coming in from all over the world to visit Columbia, South Carolina. And that just, that's kind of unheard of for, you know, it's unheard of, but I thought it was a beautiful thing and it can be again.
Mr. Brennan, then Ms. Herbert.
Mr. Brasley, thank you for re-energizing this wonderful festival. It was fun to attend when I was much younger.
Me too.
Saw a lot of great artistic programming. I, when I hear you say in the middle of the summer, let's have it in June, I think about what an economic engine our colleges and universities are. Five Points, St. Pat's would not be Five Point St. Pat's without the USC, Allen Benedict, all the other universities and colleges that come down there with their wonderful disposable income. If it's going to be, if it's going to be the festival that we think it's going to be, bite something off in the spring, don't wait. Let's go, let's make it big early. If we're not comfortable doing that, maybe wait till the fall. I just want to make sure that our university students can really be a part of growing this and when success 15, 20 years down the road coming back annually to that event. So I just want to make that comment to you to please reconsider the timing of it. You know, you've got the private sector excited about it down there with Mr. Brown. So fundraising shouldn't be an issue. And then my last comment question to you is, speaking of the old days of Three Rivers Music Festival and just the wide variety of music, what's your programming you have in mind for it?
We're, okay, so to be honest with you, we've literally, when this first really became like real to me about a month and a half ago, I'd already like reached out to the Dixie Chicks, I reached out to Aerosmith. I've been, but, but let me be honest, that everybody, no one came back with less than a million five for them to even talk to me. So I knew that I had to then do sponsorships because I knew I could not rely on the city or the county to do this. So we've already initiated sponsorships. And the reason that I moved it to June is, like I said earlier, when I spoke to Ms. Roberts with Experience Columbia, she told me it was so many festivals already, because Three Rivers usually would be in April. So it was so many festivals and I was like, well, I don't really want to compete with them, but now that I'm listening to Ms. Brussels, Brussels, I'm sorry, about partnering with these other foundations and these other people, then it is a conversation that we can go back and have. And it's possible that we could get something shaken by April, because we have enough time to do it. I mean, it's, it's not a lot, lot to do, because I think as far as the dynamics of it and the production and the technical things, I have a lot of staff that was actually a part of Three Rivers back then that are in full support of me bringing it back and they're literally telling me it's an open door, whatever I need from them, I can get it.
It was very volunteer heavy, so that's good.
Yes, 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 yes. So I think that, and I'm not sure if you're familiar with Fred Monk, he was one of the originators of the festival, but he and I had a very long conversation and he was, he's so excited. He was like, what you need from me, I'm there. So, yeah.
Well, thank you.
Very much, yes, sir.
And Councilmember.
I hold on, Mr. Bailey, Ms. Herbert, and then you.
Thank you.
Just real quick, I also wanted to thank you for, oh, what did I ride? Oh, you weren't there. I got to ride in some, something.
Slingshot.
Yeah, say it again.
Slingshot.
I did get to ride in a slingshot on Friday, whatever that is. So that was a cool experience. But I also wanted to thank you because I know that you had your event and you stepped up to help some other folks out. But I am too concerned about June and I was thinking about, we know we would have, you know, normal June, June team, then trying to make sure we're not putting too many at the same time. But I think, but I see that, I'm kind of thinking, we'll, we'll maybe ride on this one, but making sure we catch the students.
You heard it here first.
But, because again, and then the last thing I was going to say is, now what you cannot do is say they lost money every year and it's a part of the presentation that makes us.
No, I was just referencing that what I was told and how I was against it. I'm so sorry.
They just don't ever say that. When requesting funds.
Got it.
Never mentioned that we lost, they lost.
I just leave it honesty, I'm sorry. But I won't do it anymore.
Mr. Bailey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Brasley, one question I have is really about target audience and I guess genre of music. And in my head, with festivals, I like to think of Jazz Fest in New Orleans, you had Dreamville Fest, which I believe is in Fayetteville or Pirlana, Rolling Loud down in Miami. Do you have an idea if it's multiple stages and different genres of music? So it's not just, you know, country or hip hop, something that everybody I think would enjoy, something for everybody in Columbia to come and really bring the heart and vibe and see what the Three Rivers Festival used to be for the city?
Well, actually, yes, we do. I am reaching out to, I don't know if you guys were familiar, but just a few months ago, there was an EDM event in West Columbia at the Speedway and they did no advertising and I think over 40,000 people showed up. They have these private text groups and social media groups and they just put out that Shaq was going to be the DJ and thousands of people showed up. They did no advertising on any radio, any television, no nothing. They just text and people, they came from all over the place. And this was right here in West Columbia about, about two months, two, three months ago. So we're definitely going to get all genres of music. I mean, when you say country, hip hop, EDM, gospel, R&B, rock and roll, whatever I can get, excuse me, whatever I can afford, let me be clear, whatever I can afford is what I'm going to get and we're going, we're going to have a good time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you. Just a couple of other considerations as we're talking about this. You know, I wish there was like a universal calendar for Columbia and all of the things that we do here because there's so many weekends where there'll be eight things going on and then there are going to be, there are weekends where there's nothing. And I think that is because we're so comfortable working in our silos sometimes. I agree with Councilman Brennan and other folks that have said we need to consider the students. But I also think that there is an opportunity to explore like late August or the fall, really being like a big welcome back to the city, because there's so much that happens in the spring and then it's like pretty dead in the summer, right? And Columbia is still a very special place in the summer and I think that there is, there is some real opportunity there in terms of really being able to stand out. So just ask you to consider that as well.
Definitely.
I have to disagree with my colleague. There is 40 things to do in Columbia every day and every weekend, no matter what time of the year is, just got to look at your calendar, especially.
All right.
Yeah.
All right. I'm just saying, sometimes we overlook the summer because it's hot.
I guess, Roy, I think, you know, I'm excited about a music festival and having a signature. I think the biggest challenge we have, and I think this is what we've got to figure out, is how do you overcome the cost today of the artists? Because when the Three Rivers Music Festival was done originally and even the festival is going out, the price is just, I mean, what artists are getting today is things. So how do we create a cool festival of bands that people want to see that A, we can afford and that cover all those genres? Because I mean, you literally can blow a million dollars just on one band and, you know, we got an hour and 45 minute show. And so, you know, I think the big thing here is, is we move forward, if we appropriate money, I think what we need to do is, is hear from, from you where the sponsorships go, what a lineup looks like before we start dispersing deposits and then they'll have the money to pay the artists. That doesn't do good.
No.
And the other challenges, you know, and finding the right date, because promoters today, if they got a band that's playing two months later in Charlotte or Atlanta are going to not bring that band here because they're afraid, which is, is very strange because we as a community thrive. Now, what I think is going to be an advantage for you is things like when people get to see the midday shows, they see that the soccer at the stadium sold out in three hours in Columbia, South Carolina. Same effect is those 19 countries, people are coming from everywhere to see that soccer game, shows us that Columbia will support events like this. Timing obviously is the biggest thing. How do we make it the most comfortable? How do you do it? And, and I think for us, I think we just need to dive down into a little deeper and figure out how do we get there and how do we end up making it a cool festival, even if you don't have some major touring act? Maybe they're all regional acts that people are loving to see, but they get to feel the music. And like you said, having those genres, you know, maybe you have a gospel brunch as part of it, you know? I mean, there, there are a lot of creative things we can do to make this a unique event. And I think for us, I think the idea is how do we incubate this? Maybe it's, maybe it turns into a one day and then it becomes a two day and then long term, you know, it gets longer, which is challenging today in today's world to have a thing unless you're as big as CMA Fest and every major corporation's writing a check. But I'm excited about where headed. I think we just got to get down into more detail, figure out how we can get you to have a successful event.
Yeah, I think the key, like we said earlier, is that the one day I'm totally fine with to start. And then maybe if God's will, we can bounce back to three day, a three day festival, that's totally fine, but we definitely won't jump there if we're not prepared for it. But I think that the sponsorships is key. As I stated earlier, I'm literally going to Essence for July 4th because I work, that's my job, you know, I'm a celebrity hairstylist and makeup artist.
You got another job?
Another job, that's my job, job. But I'm literally going to be backstage like asking favors and it's like, can you please come perform for me? So I'm going to, I'm going to do everything I can to ensure a successful event. I just ask that you guys just please support me and, and we rock it out.
Any other questions for Roy at this point? Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
Missy, are you doing the next group?
So our next group is Silicon South and representing them is going to be Bishop Davis going to speak. Thank you, Ms.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
Thank y'all for receiving us with this proposal that has been a long time in the making and I don't think I have enough room on here for.
Madam Flurk, we need a larger, we need a bigger podium for some presentation.
I see Silicon South. I see stands for Innovation, Science, Education and Entertainment. I'm going to bifurcate this proposal because it is three separate entities in two locations. And so I want to deal with the first two that will be housed at Dusker Mall, but I want to start. But I want to start with dealing with what we see and I think others have seen as what we would call the problem. The problem that we have in this corridor is that we have a zombie mall as defined by the Wall Street Journal in the midst of a tourist zone. Our mall is one of the malls that is referenced in the United States that there are certain entities that buy these, these properties very cheap, sit on them and wait for an opportunity essentially like this to come along, but they invest nothing in the malls and they cause the communities around them to deteriorate because there's no investment in it. And so this particular mall has, has, has made it on that radar. And when we first moved to the Broad River area from southeast side of town, there was a plan and I think it's in your proposal, the Broad River Corridor and Community Master Plan. And in August of 2010, this plan was released by the Central Midlands Council of Governments in Riston County as a plan to redevelop the entire Broad River Corridor. With the Dusker Mall essentially being the epicenter of that development. I was curious about their ability to do it because there had to be participation from property owners and so forth. That plan kind of dissipated because the other portion of it was the roadways had to be developed. So over the past 14 years, we moved in the month this plan was released to the, to the, to the city. We actually acquired the Service Merchandise property across the street, 20 acres, now 200,000 square feet. So we were excited as a community to see that plan and to participate and invest in that plan ourselves. Unfortunately, it, it fizzled out, as we all know. And now we're sitting with this zombie mall in the midst of our community. The other problems that we have, as we all know, Riverbank Zoo is not very far from it. 16 million visitors a year coming in, but I think maybe a third of them stay overnight as it relates to tourism. We've had issues with malfunctions in junction with the traffic. And there aren't very many hotel accommodations that would be appealing to tourists and visitors in that part of that tourist track. And then what I would call value add businesses. There are businesses that may, maybe restaurants that serve certain needs, but don't necessarily add greater value back to the community. And so we want to attract more businesses like that. So we feel that we have a solution to those problems and, and a number of other things that we think this project can add. And it's called IC Silicon South. And so, oh, I forgot. The first solution to, to the issue was the SCDOT has, and I think the federal government has invested almost $2 billion into those two areas of Colonial Drive 26 and Broad River I-20, which is huge because it is fixing the issue with malfunctions in junction, it's redirecting the traffic essentially right to the mall. But from a tourist standpoint, we're dumping traffic into an area that needs to be totally gentrified, revitalized, needs to be brought back. It's, it's time for urban renewal. So IC Silicon South seeks to do that and to draw more tourism into that area. And at this point, I think we're going to show you, well, before I go through the video, let me talk about our impact. We're unique as a church in that we not only have thousands of members spread out throughout the city and county. Our members are in all, every major quadrant of the city and in the city proper itself. But we also own 350,000 square feet of commercial property in the greater Columbia area. So this isn't unfamiliar to us in terms of large projects. As I said, we're currently across the street on 20 acres, 200,000 square feet. The mall is 40 acres, 550. We employ nearly 300 people throughout the Columbia area, which is pretty significant for an entity like ours. And we do all forms of outreach throughout the community. Over 24 years, we've invested over $50 million into the greater Columbia area. That's by way of real estate, jobs, outreach, you name it. And that continues to, to this day. And so we're qualified to do this initiative on many levels. But we want to, you know, expose it to the broader public, what our plan is, and even some of our partners. And so at this point, just to simplify it, we're going to tell you a little bit more about our extended project. We have become one of the largest animation studios in the country. Our B-location in southeast Columbia, Garnish Ferry, we have converted 50,000 square feet into state-of-the-art animation studios. Some of the pictures that you see now are a part of that location, master editing suite. We've produced since COVID, two movies. We've edited for SCD and ETV, a major documentary. We have last year been enlisted to do the new Pink Panther. We brought Pink Panther to 3D as an animated studio here in Columbia and that will at some point be nationally released. I think it's huge that we have an opportunity to bring a slew of animated movies, production, stars, voiceovers here to our city. We have seven animated movies slated, scripted, ready to go as we are talking to major studios about funding them. So we have a unique opportunity to expand our animated studios on the southeast side of town to the west side of town. And we'll talk about that a little more in depth, but right now I'm just going to show you the IC Silicon South video.
I'm glad you're operating that because I certainly couldn't get through all that.
Compass Media and Animation Studios presents IC Silicon South. Innovation, science, education, and entertainment. With the growing demand of technology, there is an even greater demand for technicians. Silicon South seeks to meet those demands over the next 12 years, utilizing six core collaborative components wrapped in an acronym called CAREERS. Silicon South will create the technical minds of the future that will encompass the technical career. Corporations, academics, real estate, entrepreneurship, recreation, and students. Corporations like Dominion Energy, Trane, Samsung, Western House, Prisma, all types of science engineering and medically related companies are vital to the success of the CAREERS program. Through academics, from kindergarten to college, academics is a critical piece for creating Silicon South. 16 technical colleges, school districts, and technical high schools will become collaborative partners in the Innovation Center at the Compass Media and Animation Studios. Real estate is the critical component of the entire project. Without it, you cannot have a home base. Compass Media Animation Studios and Compass Premium Mall will be the base for the new Silicon South. Compass Premium Mall will foster the core principle of entrepreneurship with restaurants, hotel accommodations, and retail establishments. Recreation is critically important to the project because it is the lure or the draw for the type of individuals, tourists, and workers necessary to make this project a success. All of the recreational components, like the movie theaters, arcades, et cetera, are vital to the success of the project. Students are the core factors that will cause this program to be a continued success. They are the technicians of the future. They are the corporate leaders that begin today, starting from kindergarten to college. Over the next 12 years, Silicon South will be built around the core base of students. At Compass Media and Animation Studios, IC Silicon South will continue to perpetuate the legacy of Compass Media's core belief of showing the way.
To Mr. Brennan's point, when we talked about the Shaw Circle Innovation Tour and there needed to be a hub, we realized the same thing, that this facility could serve as that type of hub for innovation throughout the entire region. We have the luxury of, of dealing with STEM education internationally. I just came back from the Caribbean. We have contracts in Jamaica. One of the challenges that we have seen as we're trying to become more progressive and, and cutting edge is we have to start younger in our training. So as we're looking at Scout Motors and other ancillary companies that will come, that will surround that, our educational system has to absorb that level of technology and, and those companies. I had, I had the privilege of working in Orlando in the mid 90s, which is essentially a tourist city, but working at a tech company, seeing how it affects a city. So if we're talking about Scout Motors coming and 4,000 jobs, we have to begin to train our greater community for those type of jobs younger. What we're doing with the Innovation Center is hubbing, but also creating a tourist opportunity because we pick up where Adventure leaves off. We start younger with kindergarten to third grade STEM technology training, but it's geared toward the types of companies that are going to be relocating here. 90,000 square foot facility that's going to serve all elements of technology, even an aspect that I'm very excited about, we're going to do Jurassic animatronics. So even though we're going to deal with paleontology and all kinds of archaeology and all that kind of stuff, we have to make it exciting for kids and tourists. And so we're bringing theme park level animatronics into the mall. We're doing animation studios, robotics, all kinds of things that will excite kids from across the state and the region to come to Columbia and learn and participate in this Innovation Center. One of the challenges that we're having and we've had discussions with Adventure about this is reaching urban school districts and urban kids. That's been the challenge. And if we're going to be competitive both here and around the state, we've got to get those kids engaged. And this Innovation Center, we feel, is a place that, that will happen. So the Innovation Center is one component in the mall and we're making a separate ask for it. Then the second component is the film and arts complex. So the existing historic theater, Dusker Square, believe it or not, is the third largest in terms of seating capacity facility we have in the city. It's larger than the Cogurt Center. Cogurt Center seats approximately 2,200 people in terms of one single seating. This facility seats 2,600. What we've decided to do is to make it into a film and arts complex so that we can host multiple types of events, live shows and so forth, by taking the 14 theaters and turning them into 14 live and film venues. And we've enlisted partners to do this. We ourselves are capable of producing live shows. And so we're excited about bringing this on as a new venue in the area for events that may not be as large, but still would draw individuals from outside of our Columbia area. So from a tourist aspect, you have that coupled with eight newer eclectic restaurants that we're bringing to the, into this facility and around the facility. Chick-fil-A is moving into the parking lot. I think the city has seen that they've come before you in terms of that. But we're bringing other restaurants into this project as well. And it gives us a lot of diversity in terms of functionality. So at this point, I'm going to open up for questions about those two portions because they're on one property and then I'll deal with the third request.
Questions? Hear me down.
Bishop, talk to us a little bit about the external view of the, of the zombie mall.
Yeah.
And how that configures itself.
I, I like that. I thank you for asking that. We're, I spent the time in Florida and fell in love with Mediterranean style stucco and palm trees. When we go down to the beach, Hilton Head, those malls have an appeal because they are there to draw tourists. So we're going with that vein, that style, that look. If you saw in the video, you saw some of the redevelopment of the belt into the animation studio. So that color palette, that look and that feel is what we're going for to redevelop that mall. If you go across the street to our property, that's our same theme, palm trees, stucco. We want to carry that theme over because it's inviting, warm, bright. And it will lift the entire community to bring that to the mall. The mall is unique in that its architecture was, it was designed and built in the 70s and what is old is now new again. And so it's actually, when the features are brought back, one of the prettiest malls in the city. It just needs to be revitalized. It needs to be brought back using its current architecture.
Mr. Brown?
So with every venture, there's concerns. And especially something like this. And, and for full disclosure, you know, I'm getting pretty old, but I've been told for the last 35 years that you can't do what you're doing. So don't let somebody tell you you can't do what you're doing. However, what's your number one concern? What, what, what really keeps you up at night knowing that this is a pretty far-reaching project for that area, for any area, but specifically for that area? So what's your, what's your number one concern?
Support, that the, the city and the county see the viability in that community. I think that what happens in urban communities, we see, for example, one of the things that, that fostered this is once we saw that there was a decided investment in the Forest Acres community and the state roads, you know, were there. This is prime time, right? But a lot of times our optic and our view of these types of communities is that they can't come back. You know, we come from the adage of rebuilding the ruins. That's what we did when we moved over to the Service Merchandise Plaza. When we were buying it, they asked us, they said, why don't you just tear that thing down and start all over? But I'm an engineer, so I look at the bones of, and the structure of a thing. Aesthetics and, and all that's easy. Elevations are easy. It's the structure sound. Can it be brought back? And what we see is that there's a lot of life left in this historic facility. We just have to be willing to make the investment and participate. I think that it's centrally located. It's one of the best located properties in terms of highways, in terms of tourism, and you know, much more better.
It used to be the center of the universe. When I was a kid, we always, you know, that's where we went.
Well, if we think about it like this, Columbia is the center of the state. That's the center of the city. So essentially that location is the epicenter of the state. So all roads lead to it. If we give it, give it its value back, it can thrive.
So we live in a really interesting world of risk management. So, so everything's based on math, not hope, not common sense, not what you want. The private sector participation in this, how much of a concern is that?
Well, if you look at this proposal, we put a sustainability plan in there where we considered all of that. One of the things that I'm very excited about.
It's in your folder.
It's in your folder. Each one of us has a sustain, sustainability plan and we gave it an acronym called SLICE. So because like you, I'm a businessman, how can this exist for long term? And someone asked that question of another project, sustainable, I think it was Councilman McDowell, as, as related to Three Rivers. Currently, the mall is at 47% occupancy, which is given where it is, not bad, given as bad as it looks. But we're, we're confident that we'll get it to 100% occupancy by 2026. Even some potential municipalities coming in with us. We already have letters of intent that bring us up to about 76 to 80% of that already. So we're very confident we'll get the mall back to 100%. Of course, like you said, people want to see it come back and it beautified. Once they see that, the world changes. Land sales and leases, the same way. Land sales and leases, the same way Chick-fil-A bought a portion of that parking lot, because that is 40 acres, there are out parcels. That as we bring the mall back, we bring what I call value-added businesses back to that community who will buy the out parcels, that we have no issue with selling those because they'll add value to the area. And then there's income from CDC-owned businesses. We'll have our own businesses in there that we will run, that will help fund it, and then corporate partnership investments. We're, the mayor and I have had a conversation, and he thinks he's going to win, I think I'm going to win. I want to get Apple in that mall. I believe that we can get an Apple store in the center of that mall.
I can assure you, this will be the end of Daniel if you beat him. He will just turn to dust. To dust.
To dust. So we believe we can get an Apple store. Now, let me tell you why that's significant, because there's a portion of this project I'm leaving out that's very important. In addition to the studio, the animation studio, we're partnering with Midland Tech and the school district to do dual enrollment with a school of animation. So now you're talking about students coming in there daily, that are coming in for dual enrollment, coming in for animation, and then all of the ancillary programs that come out of that, you know, cybersecurity, esports, gaming, this can become a hub of innovation and life, because it's centrally located, not far from downtown, USC students, Apple would be a huge business to put in that mall.
I didn't, I don't know that we're on the same page of the Apple location.
I don't even want to consider what would happen if he beat you on this, so.
Well, I'm going to DC, and so we're going to see, when I come back from DC.
You know who you're going to see when you get there?
Yeah.
So I did some signs for a friend of mine that has a church over there, and you know, I was, for someone who went over there a lot as a kid, and before Service Merchandise, it was Ridgeway, by the way. And it was shocking to me how the area had really just gone.
Yeah.
The population of that area, the homeownership, or just the occupancy of the area, what is the real demographics like, like people who live in that area? It's really important not just to have a daytime community, you got to have a nighttime community that really drives every neighborhood. So what's it like?
So it's all here. See, this is the wonderful thing about it, we have to stop doing this. You know, I'm a corporate guy, right? Former corporate guy. If you spend money, you need to use the instrument that you've paid for. We spent a lot of money as a community doing this master plan that broke down the demographics of that entire community. It's the most transient part of our community, but it tells you who's there. Now, it may have changed some over the past, you know, 10 years or so, but for the most part, it's, I believe, has remained pretty consistent. What we need to do is dig back in to the plan that we already have, utilize it, and make this area work again. It can live again.
That's the COG plan you're talking about?
I'm sorry?
The COG.
Yeah, the COG plan, yeah. But you know, as it relates to our moving there, we've already seen changes. For example, with the next part that I'm going to present, which is the Recreation Arena that we built, is amazing because I redesigned it, right? So every building, every design, I did it myself, right? So when I walk out and I see soccer moms jogging through the parking lot because they left their children at the arena to practice, or they came in from town with a tournament, and they're walking the dark through our parking lot, which is major, which is, I'll talk about this last part, it amazes me because when we first went there, people wouldn't let us long walk, they wouldn't drive through there. I had the fire department ask me, "Why in the world would you buy this place?" "There's prostitutes, there's gangsters, there's hoods, you know, hood rats out here." I said, "We're buying it because it's prostitutes and gangsters and hood rats here." But to see the transformation has been remarkable, and the same thing can happen with that mall, and the community has accepted and embraced that transformation, so much so that if you look around, palm trees everywhere, because we started with palm trees.
It's really, you know, impactful to hear you just kind of describe it, because it's really, that community needs this, and it has to have something to bring it back, and there's got to be a catalyst to do it. So I applaud you for your vision and the effort behind this, and it's really important for that area. And I do, I do understand what you're saying, that it really is a centerpiece of Columbia, it's just a forgotten centerpiece of Columbia.
Right.
Ms. Herbert?
Thank you. So I needed to get a little bit of clarity. The two things that we're talking about now would be the animation studios and what?
No, the Innovation Center. So the Innovation Center is distinct from the animation. It's targeting 50,000 students statewide, working with school districts, bringing in kids, much like Adventure, and then also for tourists on the weekend. So it's an Innovation Center.
Okay. I thought there were three things that we were considering.
I'm going to the third. We'll deal with the first two because the three are...
So what's the first, yeah, what's the first one?
The first one's the Innovation Center, the second is the Film and Arts Complex.
Okay.
And then the Recreation Arena.
Okay, and both of these would be in the Dutch Square area?
Booking the Dutch Square Mall, the mall.
And so I guess with my question, there would be, this would not be a school, but this is programming that kids can do after school on the weekends, or is it more geared towards potentially being a school?
You mean the Innovation Center?
One of the centers for the children.
Well, okay, so the Innovation Center.
Yeah.
Well, I'm asking that though, because the Film and Arts Complex will also have a youth component too, but we'll come back to that. The Innovation Center is, just imagine Adventure on steroids.
Okay.
All right? And so we're appealing to school districts statewide that will do day visits, but is also open on the weekends. So if you're visiting the zoo, and you heard about this Jurassic Park over at the Innovation Center, you can take your kid there, which is another reason to stay over a night or so, because you have another attraction.
Okay, and then the other is the?
Film and Arts Complex.
And so I think what Mr. Brown was asking earlier, of the two that we're looking at now, if you had, if you could only be funded for one of the two, what would be your priority vision-wise, and possibly, I always kind of think about two, and the lowest hanging fruit, like, so what, if you had that choice?
So let me explain why we've taken this approach, and then I think it'll better answer that, even as we fold into the other one.
You're going to give me one or the other?
Well, I'm, I'm going to try, I'm going to try, I'm going to try. Now, let me tell you why. This deal is conjoined, because much like with the Riston Fashion Mall deal, they needed to sell that portion to Forest Acres for the park, the $3 million, so they could add that back into their package for the purchase and acquisition of the mall and the development of the mall. Then they went to Riston County for tax abatements, because all that folds into the package. We have structured this in such a way that the asks are conjoined, because it helps to facilitate that, because as Mr. Brown said, when you do a project of this size, you need participation. So it's very difficult for me to parse one out, because they're working in tandem, and they both are designed to draw two types of tourists into the mall. So, and they're doing multiple things, so it's better to keep them together. But I want to answer that before I move to the third part, but that would be nice.
And, oh, I'm sorry, you still?
Yeah, and so too, I see the request. What is the total budget for the project?
Okay, so the total budget is in phases. Phase 1A of this project is $17 million, as we're going in, that we're investing into the project to get the mall back functional, operational. 1B takes it up to $31 million, because as we bring the other tenants in and other projects that are going to be going on there, it's going to take it to Phase 1A and B at $31 million. Phase 2 is where the hotels, condominiums, and all those things come in, and that's a much larger development project, it's probably $40 to $50 million with all of those components that we're going to bring with that. But to answer your question, Phase 1A and B, about $31 million.
Okay, and we're in between one and, we're in one, Phase 1?
Yeah, Phase 1A, Phase 1A. Phase 1A.
So could you talk a little bit, I think it's important for us to understand and for everybody to understand, so from a financing standpoint, your request obviously is hinged on the package being complete, and I know that you're working with Jeddah and other financing, could you just maybe share that information?
Sure.
To what you can publicly, I mean.
Right, that's the part about that, you know, how much you can put out publicly, but yes, because we are going for Jeddah approval, and as I just said, we're taking responsibility for the first $17 million of the project, and I kind of didn't answer that correctly. So it's probably more like $25 million in 1A, because you asked, if you're in the first phase, you're not in the 17. That's us. We're essentially asking for an additional 2. But, so between the city and the county is about 4, and then there's other corporate partnerships that we're bringing in. So that'll bring in about $25 million in the 1A phase. But to your point, Mr. Mayor, again, it's just like the Riston Fashion Mall project, you have to enlist partners, and everyone just a segment, to make the project live. And so the portion that we're asking for you all of this project is the 2 million, but here's the wonderful thing about it, it doesn't have to be allocated in a single year, it can be spread over four years. We just need the commitment that we'll have the support, the same way they ask for support, we need the support for this project because essentially we're the developer and the developer needs support.
All of it hinges on the, on obviously completing the financing and everything else.
Right.
I guess the other question I had around that model, can you talk a little bit more about how, so you have the Innovation Center, obviously the entertainment, you talked a little bit about the Jurassic Park, the e-games and all of that, how that ties into the visual art piece and the venue, obviously, which is, as you mentioned, is, you know, I think you said, the third largest?
Yeah, this is huge. So we didn't, we don't realize how much of an asset we have in this boutique mall. So if you take Riston Fashion Mall, there was a million square feet. You got to look at, Dutch Square Mall is more of a boutique mall, because the only thing that has multiple stories is the Belt. It's one story, so you don't have to worry about people who don't want to walk too much not being able to enjoy the entire mall. The unique thing is, the movie theater that bookends it is 57,000 square feet, but it's not being utilized during the daytime. It's not being maximized, because, you know, the theater industry in terms of that is not where it was pre-COVID. So why not take these venues that are sitting there, and you've got TED Talks, you've got comedy shows, you've got all kinds of things that can happen in a facility like this, where you have multiple things going at the same time with higher-end restaurants, and you can now entertain 2,500 people at one time? We don't have another space in Columbia that can do that. So to be able to take this historic facility and revitalize it and bring that back, you're essentially creating Vista West, you're creating another hub of restaurants and potential entertainment. So that's how we see that art and film complex. Now, in addition to that, you know, you have, you know, anything that's in the art community that wants to host, whether it be plays, or, as I said, comedy shows or whatever, you now have another venue in the city to do that, and it becomes more doable when you're talking 250, 300 people as opposed to 2,000, and you can do multiple shows and so forth. So it's a unique approach to that facility, and yet it doesn't preclude it from doing film. Obviously, if we're producing films, we're going to exhibit films, and we're going to host films. But around family programming shows and all this kind of stuff, kid shows, it's a very unique opportunity that we have at the facility.
And, you know, the Innovation Studio moving, obviously, is a big key part of that, and expanding that and creating that venue. I guess the last thing, I think we just want to clarify, this is not a church-owned property.
No, so I'm glad you asked that. So the church owns the CDC. We've created a community development corporation. We're investing in the community development corporation to invest in the property. And another proposal that we have actually...
What you, in the short term, what I want to clarify is that it does pay property tax.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it does. It does pay property tax. Well, now, let's say this, what people misunderstand about that, though, is even...
They won't own it, it'll be a private entity.
Even if it were church-owned, anytime you rent, like for example Burlington, you still have to pay the taxes, so it's pro-rata.
Well, that's, that's a little shaky there.
But it is what it is. I mean, and so, and so it will pay the property taxes and the rented portions. So that's, that's the short answer.
Do you have a question?
Well, I have another, the B portion of this proposal.
Yeah, I just want to make sure everybody gets their questions out on this. Did you have something else?
What do you mean? You said bowl pieces? Excuse me? No, no, garnish, fair, no, it's non-taxable. Don't try to get in my pocket, Councilman McDowell.
Did you have another question on the first two before he does the third?
Yeah, just, just for my clarification, animated studios, does that mean everything that is produced there is?
No. No, no, so I'm glad you asked that, though. So what's important is, okay, so because you don't have a visual of the mall, the Belt is the animation studio, second floor, third floor. One first floor is a part of the Innovation Center, so it bleeds out into the mall, because it's 90,000 square feet. What people don't realize is that Belt is, was 210,000 square feet, it's nearly 200,000. So you've got 140,000 square feet between those two floors. That's where the School of Animation, coupled with Midland Tech, which Dr. Reims put a letter of support in there, school district, we're going to partner and put the School of Animation there, but our professional animators will be on the third floor producing. But because it's so large, 140,000, you can produce television shows, movies, it's not limited.
Okay.
But because we're predominantly an animation studio, that's it, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this point?
All right. All right, so now, this is where I know you all are going to fight with me a little bit, and so that's where I wanted to bifurcate this a little bit. The Recreation Arena, and I hate that we weren't able to bring all of you in when we did the ribbon cutting, the good mayor here came in and did a ribbon cutting and announced, it was Recreation Arena Day. He gave us a resolution, and all I want to remind you of that, Mr. Mayor, that you announced Recreation Arena Day, but we were able to build during COVID, the first of its kind, Columbia's first privately-owned NCAA-certified tournament facility. This is huge, because we've had this fight going on between city council, county council, for probably God knows how many years now, with parks and recreation, we have not had a tournament facility in this city. I am a father of an AAU athlete. I've run all over the state and the country, going to tournaments in Charleston, let me read the list, North Augusta, Charleston, Rock Hill, Green, everybody else had the tournament facility but us. All of the Columbia athletes would go away to everybody else, but nobody would come to us because we could not host these tournaments. So when our church was in the process of building a new facility, we said, "Let's go bigger, let's create a benefit to the entire city," and to begin to bring those tournaments back to Columbia. We were blessed to become an NCAA-certified tournament facility, and we just this year have hosted 21 tournaments and over 25,000 participants. 47%, as you see on that graph, of our tournament participants are visitors from out of town. According to Experienced Columbia's, you know, data, if they're over 50 miles away, they are tourists or visitors. We have 47% qualified, and we're talking overnight stay because we're doing three-day tournaments. So we have projected this year alone, our tournaments will bring in $6 million in tourist revenue from our tournaments. Now, this is year three. Year two was probably half of that, but we're only giving you year three. We spent over $10 million developing, building, and running these facilities, because there are two, and we're simply asking, you know, for some support, you know, because we're bringing the tourists in. And then let me say this too, our numbers are modest, because as we talked to Bill Elland and Experienced Columbia, we went moderately in terms of the $150 per night stay. But one of the things that's not accounted for that is, when you, when you look at those, and this is for all tournaments, when an athlete signs a waiver, you look at the individual unique athlete once, you don't look at them multiple times. So for example, when my son goes back to Charleston three times, four times a year, and we stay overnight, they've only counted him once for the year, but we've been there four times. So those numbers that you're seeing are not totally accurate, they're moderate, because those athletes are coming to us multiple times, multiple teams coming back that are competing. So what's happening is, we've got to hone down and find a way to do that more, but when you're trying to bring 1,000, 100 kids in, you know, at a time, getting all that data is hard. But the point is, we're bringing the tourists in. But the point is, we're bringing the tourists in. And once this mall comes online, because I know what we do, you go and you play a game at nine o'clock in the morning and then you're sitting around at five o'clock for the next game. So you go to the mall, you go find someplace to eat and then, you know, back to the hotel later. When we build a hotel across the street and we're talking to Congressman Claiborne folk about building a bridge across, I think that's Bakerfield Road, because of the walk traffic that we're going to have from the arena to the mall, from the hotel to the arena, because once people park their cars, and that's also very important, we have a large enough parking lot already, but when you add the mall to it, you're talking thousands of parks, which we don't have in Columbia for a facility like this. This is huge, it's right off the interstate. So we've already been doing this for three years. So this is why I'm saying it's a bifurcated ask because we're asking over the next four years for a $1 million, $1 million ask over four years if necessary, quarter million a year, just to help support these tournaments. But the return on that $1 million potentially is 25 to 30 million because we're already looking at 6 million this year in terms of tourist dollars that are coming in. So that's the simple ask.
Questions?
Yes. So how much do you all, like, so I am, I have to follow AAU years after years and our folks travel different states everywhere. So I had to sign up for Baller TV. You impressed, Daniel?
I'm very impressed.
But it keeps me from having to go. But one of the things that we talk about a lot is the cost of, like, if you want to go for three days, it's $65. And if you want to take your whole family, that becomes cumbersome. And they say that the reason that the cost is high is because it's the cost of paying the facility.
There you go.
And so I was wondering, do you know about how much you all charge or the ticket, the entry fees?
So it's very interesting. So the first three years, we've had to partner with entities that were already established because they had team rosters, they had a database. So we couldn't control the cost as much because the partners had to dictate that based on their partnership with us. But now that we have over three years acquired that entire database and we've had all of them come in, we can now control the cost. But to answer your question, $20 is typically the range. If you do two days, they'll do a $35 pass. But here's the thing, with this supplement, that helps us, well, two things have to happen. To draw those teams back from Rock Hill, Charleston, and everywhere else, you need to reduce or eliminate the fee, the entrance fee. So by getting the supplement, it gives us the ability to bring the teams. If you bring the teams, you bring the parents. If you bring the parents, bring the money. So this is why it's important because it costs about $50,000 a tournament, just to host one.
Well, and I will say, I mean, I've heard of parents, one parent will go and stay home with the other two children because they're not willing to pay $65 per head to go see one child play. So I am familiar with that.
We're sensitive to that, too, because, you know, we've experienced that and we're very sensitive to that. But then again, think about it this way, now with the Innovation Center, the mall, everything, it becomes a family vacation because standing in a hotel, everything's in walking. That's why we're bringing it together as one ask because the entire project then becomes, you get the picture.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr.?
David, just so I'm clear, the new athletic complex will be at the Dutch Square Mall property.
So we're right across the street from the Dutch Square property. So we're literally.
So you're not on Faroe Road? If I did a Google search.
So you so you have two. So what it is, we have one on campus and we bought the other one on Faroe Road. So when you when you host 100 teams, you need five courts. We now have seven because we're converting to outdoor courts. So currently, we have three courts, I'm glad you asked that, with skyboxes. So we're state of the art, and this is important for combines, we have skyboxes, state of the art facility, three courts. And then at the Faroe Road, we have two other courts combined, they host 100 teams.
And that facility currently exists?
Oh, yeah, we own, we own that one, yeah, both of them.
If I'm looking at the area of Dutch Square Mall, where is it from from the mall?
Go over to 119 Diamond Lane, go across the street to 119 Diamond Lane and go all the way to the highway, right next to the highway, you'll see it. You'll see a soccer field in front of it if you do a Google Earth view.
I'll track it down.
Yeah, go to the end of campus.
So but both of the athletic arena, all of that is currently in place and operating now?
That's it, yeah, yeah. I mean, as I said, this year alone, we're bringing $6 million of tourism dollars. We've already done 21 tournaments.
Mr. Mayor?
You're looking at the, please.
Microphone, please.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And by the way, Faroe Road has 10 acres for expansion. So we're going to continue expanding this, but I just want to make that known as well. Yes, Mr.?
Will, they place, that's Diamond Lane, right?
Yeah.
Have you seen the Diamond Lane facility?
I have not.
Yeah. Is there any way, Bishop, at some point, it may be necessary for us to visit that?
I think I think so. I mean, I think that this this is so important to the city now because, again, millions of dollars have been going out of the city.
It's important for various reasons.
Yeah, various reasons, yeah. Yeah, but what I'm saying is, it solved the problem for the county and the city because we were losing all that money and we didn't ask anybody, that came out of our pockets. All we're saying now is, help us help the city because it is definitely helping the city.
Mr. Brown?
So quick, real quick, tell me about the hotel.
So the interesting thing about that is we have developmental partners out of Sacramento that are coming in with us to look at both the condominiums and the hotels. We're entertaining different hotel chains. Obviously, the hotel chains are going to want to see the redevelopment of the mall before they do that.
Correct. So you just brought up my second question, which was, I was going to strongly suggest that you be open to multifamily out there.
That's right, that's right. So condominiums, we're always looking.
The long term success of that area has to include people who live there, not people who visit. Right, not just people who visit, that every community has to thrive off of people who live there. And whatever I can do to help in that vein with multifamily, which I think, you know, the mayor talks about a lot of times or every day, you know, we only have only short 16,000 units in Columbia. And that's without anybody else coming here. So I think it'd be great to look at multifamily and if we can help in any way, let me know.
In this plan, there's 100 unit or two, 50 each, planned for family, multifamily units. So that's definitely a major part of phase two.
Any other questions?
So we need help with this, the thing that we need before we go to Jeddah, and obviously we're going to Jeddah this week, actually tomorrow, is some form of commitment, support that just like with Riston Fashion Mall, that they know that we have the city and potentially the county as partners in the in the project. There has been a request that we conjoin it from the county side, that we make it a combined effort. And so if we can just get that support, we don't need the money now, we just need the commitment of support.
So, Mr. Mayor, one more question.
Yes.
So I was going to ask about Jeddah, so you brought it up. So what's your what's your specific ask or request or what are you looking to do through Jeddah when you go?
1670 mil. I mean, so the initial 1670 mil leverage from the church is going to go through Jeddah and that's the basis of the acquisition, first phase renovation. And I call it one A, one B. One B will move into going up to 31 million. But it'll be 25 in one A, but 1670 is the loan.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, I meant to ask too, for the property that's in the county, has the county, are they still considering or have they made their decision on what their allocation is going to be?
Yeah, so the same same ask has been made. I mean, what we're doing is, we're, you guys just moved a little faster, but we're in communication with them to set up the meeting to make the same ask. We divided it.
So is it one of those things that if one pays, if one supports first and the other doesn't, or you need the full amount from both?
Well, we're hoping that that both groups will see because the interesting thing about this, it splits literally the border of the county and the city. So everybody benefits. I think the interesting thing, though, is that it's the county's plan. So it would make sense that the county would support the plan that they initiated in 2010. We're doing what they said they want it done. So it's just that we divided the ask between the two and now we're going to them.
Thank you.
And one last question. Where the recreation, the basketball facility?
And volleyball, only about volleyball.
Volleyball, okay.
Yeah, soccer, too.
That is a part of the Word of God Church parcel that y'all currently own?
Yeah, it's on the property, but it's under, it also is under the CDC.
Understood, okay. So there's, you have a long term plan for the balance of that property as well?
Of course, yes, sir. So now, now that property is built out, we got to bring you over because the property is built out. The arena is at.
Is it annexed? Can we annex it? Where's my where's my annex person?
It don't bother me. Yeah, next, it don't bother us. It's only 150 feet off the city line, so, you know, if that, we're on the boundary of the city, annexes, we don't care. But, yeah, we do have a long term plan for that, Mr. Brendan.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, one other question. So Garnas Ferry Road will stay as it is, none of this impacts that?
You asked a great question because going back to the Crawford Agency, as I was listening to them, Garnas Ferry is already a production facility, which I was trying to reach you to come take a look at it, right? The tour. It's okay, I'm not.
I was about to say, now, you know, I've been through to a lot.
I'm not what I'm saying.
I don't like that, but okay, go ahead.
What I'm saying is this, this is my point. With the amount of production that's going to be going on in the city, we'll still need Garnas Ferry. So both locations will be doing production.
Thank you. Can I, I'll go ahead and say it as a little known fact, I met Bishop Davis. I like doing this. I think I was 18 or 19, we used to do plays together.
We did plays together?
And he was the big engineer and all the young ladies on the stage were like, ooh, ooh, I want to play next to him. So we've known each other for.
Oh, God.
Here we go, we going downhill.
Never, never.
Now you go get head started.
Let this conversation be a conversation on development.
Anyway, thank you so much, those are all my questions.
Thank you all for entertaining us. Are y'all done with me?
Any other questions?
Can I just ask one more question?
Yes, sir.
So tell me, the Jeddah, the loan that you would get through Jeddah, that's specifically to do what?
It's a bond.
I know.
So it's a bond.
I was chairman of Jeddah for a decade, so.
Oh, you know, I heard that. I heard that. You know, it's not an IR bond, it's the other category. What is the?
So you're a 501(c)(3).
Yeah, well, so it's through, oh, you mean through what, our CDC?
Yeah, but I'm just saying, what are you going to do with the money? That's what I'm really more mostly interested, exactly.
Purchase and renovate.
Okay, but I mean, of all this, the 16 million takes you?
Through one A.
So that covers what you need?
That covers that covers what I need to purchase and do first phase renovation, phase two renovation and one B, which is when we bring in all the other tenants, potentially municipalities, there's another chunk there and that's where my corporate partners and all come in. But to take the mall down, get that facade redone, get it where we need to go, I only need 17 million.
So you don't need a you don't need a long term partner now? Your long term partner is really designed around developing the area?
Yeah, and the and the internal tenants that we put in, the loan will be paid for, that's why I said in the slice, space rental is the, it'll carry the note.
Okay, thank you.
Carry the note.
So the one A would encompass the Film and Arts Center and the Innovation Center?
Yeah, it'll encompass that.
And it would then be up and running, thus justifying hospitality tax dollars?
Exactly. So the idea is to have it up and running within six months. And that six to 12 month thing, because we're doing production, development, when I say production, I'm talking about, well, development, let me say development. We will likely close the theater for about six months to do a total remake and then relaunch it. The Innovation Center, what is this, we start in July, we'll have the Innovation Center up and running November is timeframe because the school districts don't start doing their school visits until that time of year because September, October, they're getting re-acclimated. Around November, they started doing visits, so we don't want to miss that window. So we immediately, we're slated to close in July and start immediate renovations. The good news is, we've surveyed this mall up and down, I've spent, I've been looking at it in my dreams. So we know the timeline, about four months to six months is going to take us to do what we need. We may take a little longer with the theater only because of some of the unique things we want to do with it. Lighting, all that kind of things that the theater currently doesn't have, so. That's it.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, no questions, but Bishop Davis, I'd just like to thank that your energy, vision and effort for work that you are doing and through your entities in the Broad River corridor. You know, there's still a lot of people who live over there, a lot of households over there. And I think something like this would bring people out from, if you look at extending Harbors Center, Irma, all the way out towards Broad River, Dutch Square area, Bush River Road, there's still a lot of families out there. And I think it's an area that we should, as a city, look towards the best again. But nothing from me and I appreciate your time today, Bishop Davis.
Thank you, Tyler. And I tell you this, if I get the Apple Store from the mayor, I'll get everybody.
You and I going to have to fight in the parking lot over that one. That's not going to happen. Thank you for being here, Bishop. Obviously, we don't vote during work sessions so that our overall budget hearing will be coming up this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bishop.
Mr. Mayor, do y'all need a break or you're going to push through? You're at about 20 minutes before.